Welcome to the March 19, 2024. The Larnes County Council meeting. President Lou.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now's the time for public comments. Gerald Higgs.
As I stand up here, I stood right here, almost on the same spot 23 years ago. I was invited at the head of Jim Marx, and the matter at hand was annexation of Mark subdivision. So I proceeded to tell the mayor and council that the city had been in violation of Title 67 Idaho code for 26 consecutive years and that they did not have a comprehensive plan. And as long as I own property in this city, or what was to be the city, I says, "This ain't gonna happen." And that was a public comment that I made, and it was about a penny planning and zoning matter. Because that was about us being annexed into the city. And the city knew it for 26 years of willful noncompliance, particularly under the tutelage of former city attorney Dan Fedest. So... I'm here to warn you guys that you're stepping off into quicksand. You were elected not to represent the city. You were elected to be the representatives of the citizens of this city. There's a difference and a distinction there. And whenever you try to stifle public input, that's stepping across the line. I mean, I put my life on the line for 20 years of military service, and I know what it's like to take an oath, and I know what it's like to obey it. And I warned you before about taking oaths and not obeying them. It's been the first time. So I'm asking you, pleading with you actually, do not pass this resolution because you're walking down a path of censorship. And you can couch it in all kinds of terms, call it a resolution when really what you wish you could do is pass an ordinance. But you know you can't do that because you know it wouldn't pass a muster in court.
Yep.
So I'm just asking you to table it. Can't let us speak. Sometimes I get heated, sometimes other people get heated. That's life. I think we can still have respectful discourse about difficult matters. Thank you.
Mayor, I don't want to act as a council's argumentary comment. You're gonna handle all that. There is something that I certainly would like to comment on, but I'll wait until it comes up on each one. Okay? Adrian Norris.
I urge the Bonners Ferry City Council to vote no on Resolution 2024-002. Not only do these restrictions raise constitutional concerns and raise legal challenges that could burden the taxpayers, but they also threaten to erode public trust within the local government. It is crucial to ensure that the guidelines allow for the expression of dissenting viewpoints. I repeat the word viewpoint because I was explained by a lawyer. That's a legal term. The First Amendment protects individual rights to express their viewpoints, even if the viewpoint may be unpopular or controversial. Any restrictions or enforcement actions must not disappropriately target dissenting voices as doing so would contravene the fundamental principles of free speech, especially when the city council picks and chooses which comments are desired and which ones are not. Meaning you take people who come in here and comment on how they're happy with someone, but then you want them not to. That right there becomes a conflict in legal. Similar regulations have been successfully challenged in our assigned Circuit Court of Appeals in recent years. I've already mentioned them, but Ford Ice versus City of Seattle. It is the Ninth Circuit Court in 1995. The court emphasized that the citizens have a right to express their disapproval of elected official actions, including matters related to city employees. Baca versus Moreno Valley Unified School District, which was the Ninth Circuit Court, which is also our circuit court in Boundary County, 2019, where the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal ruled that the school board policy prohibiting personal attacks and abusive behavior during the comment period was unconstitutional. The court held that citizens have a right to criticize elected officials and that the policy impermissibly restricts free speech by censoring certain types of speech based on its contents. Context. Limiting discussion topics during a citizen's designated time to petition their government, especially on matters of public concern, can undermine transparency and accountability in local governance. Furthermore, creating the resolution may be subject to legal scrutiny under the Code of Law. I'm not sure if you're familiar with the Code of Law, but please Google it. This doctrine, which prohibits the misuse of power to deprive individuals of their constitutional rights. I believe the color of law action is being used by whomever, not sure if it's your attorney or not, whoever wrote this resolution. I believe the color of law action is being used to confuse and intimidate citizens for knowing or exercising their rights. Thus, it is imperative for the city council to mitigate the risk of costly litigations and ensure compliance with constitutional standards. As stated in the First Amendment of the United States, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment or religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or the press, or the right for the people to peaceably assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances. I beg you to seek legal counsel from your Idaho Attorney General. Please share this letter and the attached March 5 letter that I gave all of you. Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment? Okay, hearing none. Reports, police? No police. Fire, no fire. City engineer.
Yeah, I have a few things to mention to you. We have a new employee, Assistant Engineer Andy Bliss. So I know he hasn't met all of you guys, so I just figured I'd introduce him at this meeting.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Pastor and an engineer.
And I have a few other things to talk about. You know, in the next couple of meetings, I'll probably be coming to you guys with a list of things that we would need to do with the golf course. I've talked with Ben and Jennifer, and also received a letter today that Jennifer forwarded from Panham Huth District about the condition of the clubhouse and the kitchen in specific. And there's a few items of cost that we'll need to discuss and bring to council as far as just bringing the kitchen into compliance. So they're not huge issues. I think a couple of sinks and I haven't had time to read the whole thing yet, but you know, a hand wash sink, grease trap. So they're not huge, you know, health risks, but they're things that are just required by Panham Huth District that we'll make sure are in place before the kitchen is used. So the other thing that I wanted to mention to you is that I talked to the mechanic today who's looked at our T mower and have found that we do have some integrals with that. So we're investigating deeply and hopefully in the next meeting we can tell you what the options are there. So the last thing I was gonna mention to you is that we've... I know I brought up to a couple of you on council and mayor regarding some trees that are doing poorly downtown. Some of our street trees along Main Street just aren't in great health. The four in front of Georgia Main Plaza, all of them have huge breaks where large branches have come off. So we're actually planning to remove those next Wednesday, and then we'll find some other suitable planting or landscaping for that location soon. And I just thought I'd let you know and make sure that the public's aware that that will likely be happening next Wednesday, so.
Mike?
Yeah?
I've had different people come to me complaining about moving up the bypass, the trees are overwriting, dying and what have you. And I never have figured out exactly whose responsibility that railroad state, and evidently it's not us.
Right, yeah, that strip of ground where the pine trees are, and they're quite tall. I understand that. And yeah, they're either in, you know, where the line is of ITDs right away versus the VNSF right away. I'm not sure where that line is exactly, but that is the separation between the two. So we don't have any... There is a portion of city property as you go to the west and a little bit south, you know, up that draw that comes up to Madison Street. But other than that, I'm pretty sure it's either ATD or VNSF right away.
So what needs to be done so that they can address those trees?
Well, I'm not sure. You know, I haven't heard of any plans that they have to remove them or leave them. You know, I just, I haven't really talked to either party about those trees.
So next time you happen to be visiting, will you imagine?
Okay. I'll do that.
Are you building engineering?
Yes, okay.
Well, let's hear somebody new, city administrator.
You know, that guy's been sloughing this week, and yeah, he's got nothing.
A way for a renewal, Spot?
Spot, yes. We're going, I think it's on the 28th. We're gonna spot myself with the executive director. We're gonna get with this young lady in front, Lydia. And we're going to take a ride on the bus and kind of get it out there in public a little bit more. Then they'll know what it's all about. So we're gonna do that and kind of, I think she called it a field trip. We'll be doing that, and I'm glad she knows what that comes to that.
Okay, next up, Todd Bateman. Bateman Benefits Regarding a Group Retiree Program. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. Hang on, got ahead of myself. I skipped over golf, I'm not used to having somebody. Golf!
I don't have much. We're hoping to open April 1st, kind of weather pending. Mike kind of touched on some of the stuff we were hoping to talk about. But we're... Did you talk to them about the reels for the fairy blower going in?
Yeah, that's on the jet hooker tonight, so, yeah.
We'll talk about it later, okay. Other than that, that's it. We're just prepping the course, open milk on April 1st. And then the health department's kind of the holdup for the clubhouse, obviously.
Right.
Can't get your county labor license until the food is approved because you can't have liquor without food with kids in the building. So that's kind of the holdup. But now, yeah, we're just trying to get the reels, the fairy blower done. And it sounds like Jimmy's okay with setting it on a town. So Dan Roberts needs to use Western in Spokane.
Say who he uses?
Well, now they're calling it Jerstar.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Same place.
Different name.
Same place.
Team's excited. They've been able to go out on the force.
What's that?
Team's been excited to go out on the force a little.
Yeah, they're using the clubhouse right now to do a big parade. Give it to you. Practice, yeah. Nice to get to play in the fall, but.
Yeah. About that new coach?
He's gonna be great.
Plays live, so he should do well.
He's pretty good, too, yeah. He's gonna be a great coach.
Travis Blackmore.
Yeah. Really motivated and...
Yeah, I talked to him the other day.
Yeah.
Didn't give him practice.
Okay, well, sorry for overlooking you.
No, no big deal.
He doesn't like public speaking anyway.
No, not really.
Okay, Todd now. All right.
So thank you for having me back. Quick introduction for everyone who hasn't been here or seen me in the past. My name's Todd Bateman. I'm the owner of Bateman Benefits. For the past 15 years, I've specialized in Medicare products and had the opportunity to present a couple times to the city council about a retiree product. So it would be for Medicare eligible retirees of the city. I put together just kind of a little one-page review. And Rick, I know that in the past meetings, I think we had success to the point where I think it was voted on last summer. But before we were able to complete the paperwork on it, you know, we had some changes within the city council. So what specifically would you like to accomplish in the review today? I have the one-page overview of the key things that I think, and I, you know, recognizing that Councilman Arthur wasn't part of the presentations in the past, I wanted to make sure we at least got to go over the key items of what we're considering. But in the past meetings, we talked about the overview of Boundary County's Medicare options and why adding one additional product for the city retirees would make sense. We talked about the benefits themselves, but I didn't figure in this meeting it was time to rehash all those same things. So I tried to go with a streamlined overview, but before I dive into that, I just wanted to check, is there anything specific that you were hoping we would touch on?
No, just enough information that the council can make an important decision to move forward with this.
Yes, and the second little booklet has the benefits of this specific product. So again, Councilman Arthur, if you have any questions, having kind of missed the earlier presentations, please dive in and let me know. I'll just give you a quick overview of why we think this is a really good idea for the city. If you look at the key points on your little review sheet, it talks about this coverage is being offered through Regions Blue Shield Device. So a premium company, actually the largest in the Pacific Northwest. It's considered a group-sponsored Medicare Advantage Plan. And so in the world of Medicare, there are different types of products, but it does follow the Medicare Advantage portion of the rules. Group employer completes an application to approve the offering. So really what's happening is the city as an employer would be the one sponsoring it by merely completing an application. They're actually not contributing financially. So you can see on that next line, there's no cost to the city or the taxpayers. The member portion of what they would pay for the premium on this product that we've been presenting is $16. So obviously, you have a fee, you pay to Original Medicare. On top of that, the only premium is a $16 premium that they would pay directly to Regions. Okay? One of the things that's...
That's...
Yeah.
They don't have to do that. If they want to join, then it would cost them that.
Correct, yep. So there is no obligation to participate in it. The city retirees would continue to have all their usual Medicare options. So that was one of the key features, I think, in the approval last time, was it was conditional on the idea that it was optional, no obligation to participate. And that's absolutely true. Members can choose any other option. They can work with any other agency they want. What this merely does is it provides one additional option. It is exclusive through the, through city retirees. This particular type of program usually only exists for large employers, usually around 100 employees or above. So I had special permission with my connection. Obviously, Bonners Ferry is my hometown, or my, I was raised here.
Right.
So special affection, when Regions was launching their Medicare products here two years ago, I approached them about the city, the county, and some of the other larger employers up here, saying, hey, we're not gonna have very many that would fit your criteria, but if you would allow me, I would pitch them to multiple large employers within the community. That would give you a very good option of getting your products in front of people. And they were agreeable. So we were allowed to make this presentation specific to the city and the county without it really being the typical size that would offer such a product. So it is unique. It's exciting that they have granted us the opportunity to consider it. And really, it only adds one additional option to the consumers. They can still, as we've said, go anywhere else. Couple of things that are really cool about this product that helps them solve some solutions that don't really exist publicly is that it's very portable across state lines. So typically, if you buy a Medicare Advantage product and you move out of the county, or for sure if you move across the state line, you will lose that product. They are filed by county within the states. Now, this is a group-sponsored product, so it addresses that. If your retirees want to move out of the state, they can live anywhere in the U.S. and they can keep this product. Okay? So that's one of the benefits. It's a national PPO, so Regions is able to tie into and borrow the provider network from 48 out of 50 states that also sell PPO products. So they're using that larger Blue Shield Blue Cross Association to leverage doctors and hospitals all across the country. So as you can imagine, as retirees travel and go visit family and do their thing, they'll have that opportunity to seek care at their own terms. They can find in-network doctors and providers in other states. Or if they decide they want to make some move permanent, they can live anywhere in the 50 states and keep this retiring product. Okay? Worldwide emergency and urgent care. So even if they travel out of the country, this product has served them exceptionally well in those conditions out of the country. It includes dental, vision, and hearing benefits. Includes free gym membership, and here locally, Iron Mikes does participate in that program. So any of the retirees who have that would have that free gym membership. Let's see. Oh, this one is a big one. Protects retirees' access to Medigap options. And so in a previous meeting, we talked about the difference between a Medicare Advantage and a Medigap, and why some will choose the lower-cost Medicare Advantage versus why would we choose the Medigap product that costs almost $200. And it really comes down to out-of-pocket costs when you use the product. What we're proposing here, it does have a nice, you know, copay structure for most of the benefits. It has a nice max out-of-pocket scenario where you'll be covered 100% beyond a certain threshold. But there's a lot of people in retirement that would like to go with a Medicare Advantage while they're feeling young and healthy, right? And as they need more services later in retirement, a lot of them would like to go to a Medigap plan, but they can't because the Idaho rules allow for medical underwriting in that scenario. So what happens is when we put a group retiree product in place, it guarantees the members' access to the Medigap plan if they come off group-sponsored coverage. That one bullet point right there, that one item, if all the plan was like the same price, the same benefit as everything offered publicly, that one protection that you'd be offering your retirees would be worth it. Because if they stay in the group-sponsored version of this product, they could have it for five years, 10 years, and then still choose access to that Medigap plan with guaranteed issue. And they wouldn't have to go through that medical underwriting process. So that's a very, that's a very big value as to why I think, you know, any large employer that has the opportunity should take advantage of this. Available to all past and future retirees. So if approved by the city council and put in place, any past retirees of the city would be able to join the program. And obviously, you know, any who retired going forward. The other thing that is mentioned here is, I highlighted again, optional participation. They maintain all their other Medicare options. And then the steps at the bottom just highlight what we would need to do if, again, the board does, or excuse me, the council wants to approve it again. We just need to fill out the group master application, which is what was provided in advance.
Is that right?
Yep, that's the form. So once that's been, you know, submitted to Regions, they will have a one additional form, it's called a rate sheet. And it's a one-page, all it says is the name of the product, promised monthly rate, and then that's another thing that we need to sign on top of that. But they won't provide that until we tell them exactly which product we've approved. So again, the one that we spent all the time emphasizing this past year was a $16 called the Medicare Advantage Primary Plus or Explanatory PPO. And it does include that comprehensive dental, so it makes it, you know, a very strong option compared to, you know, what we see in the market. That's kind of the highlights. That's the quick overview of what we tried to present in multiple meetings last year. Any questions?
I have a question. Am I allowed to ask him a question?
No.
Okay.
Talk to him right when we have the words. Does the council have any?
Yep. Was it $16, that just a one-time deal?
That, I apologize, that's the monthly premium that the member would pay directly to...
That's the monthly.
To Regions, yep. So $16 would be the monthly premium. Now, while we're on that note, these plans renew every January 1st. And so what the 2025 version of this product will be and what that premium will be is obviously unknown to us at this time. But you know, Regions is a reputable company that's been pretty tried and true and consistent with their renewals. So we don't expect anything too drastic, but the reality is, is every January 1st that comes up for renewal, obviously, we would host any meetings and inform any members that participate through letters. You know, there's requirements on that. We have to make sure everyone's properly notified well in advance for their renewal if premiums or adjustments or benefits change.
We've already voted on this once and approved it, and it looks like we're gonna do it again tonight. Is that gonna be last time, or is it...
You know, I'm hoping, I'm hoping third time's the charm that we get it across the finish line.
Is this open to spouses?
It is, yes. Great question. So any Medicare eligible dependent, so even if there was a, you know, a child that lived in the home that was Medicare eligible dependent of a retiree, they would also be eligible.
So in order to qualify for this, you have to be 65 years old on Medicare Part A and B?
Correct. So the Medicare eligibility rules typically start at age 65, so typically over 65. If somebody retires from the city under age 65 and becomes Medicare eligible through disability, they would also be ready to begin this program. So the two main criteria are Medicare eligible, participating in Part A and B. And then to be considered retiree, we have to be below the, you know, full-time employee status. Because if somebody is working on a part-time basis for the city, they technically can, they'll be, they'll lose their group medical benefits because they're in a, you know, less than full-time position, and they could join this. Okay? But if they're working in a full-time capacity for the city, obviously, they're not gonna be retiree status yet. So Medicare eligibility and retiree, you know, less than full-time hours would be required for them to be eligible.
Okay.
Yeah, good questions.
Any other questions for him?
So if we don't, so we don't have anybody signed up?
Yeah, if nobody signs up, it doesn't, I mean, there's no harm to that. It's not hurting the city. The city's not responsible for any of these premiums. So it's really about recognizing the opportunity, filling out an application that just then allows Regions to do that. You know, when it comes to implementation, I think I made in the footnotes there about the steps. You know, Regions and myself are more than willing to pay for any of the, you know, mailing or advertising, you know, for any meetings to help create awareness. The city and different organizations have different concerns about mailers and participating with volunteering addresses and things of that nature. Obviously, we respect those boundaries, so if the city is unable to provide any addresses of past retirees or anything like that, we'll do the best we can through public forums, you know, put something in the paper to get the word out. But the more that we can let people know that this is an option for past retirees and future retirees, the better for everyone in the program. Obviously, you know, there's no enrollment requirements. There's nothing that's being, like, asked of us other than, you know, we do the best we can to put the information in front of eligible individuals and help them enroll if they see fit. But if they like their existing programs, they don't have to switch.
Are the monthly premiums dependent on group claims?
So the way that these products will be rated year to year is with, across the state. So the body of group retiree programs, it won't be specific to your city. So if you have one person and they have a rough year, it's not gonna be tied to their claims ratios. But it'll be the performance of all group retiree Medicare Advantage products across the entire state of Idaho. Okay? So that's...
So the $16 could vary.
Very well could, yeah. So...
Go to $1,600. Just being a smart ass, sorry.
The good news is, and you know, I mentioned, you know, my agency's independent, so I'm contracted with these competing carriers, you know, in this area. So if I meet with a retiree from the city, my goal isn't to sell them just this one plan. My goal is to say, here's the offer that the city has for you, but here's everything else in the public market. Because it's important that they know what the other carriers are offering. It's important that they know what a Medigap plan is, because some might choose that right from the get-go. So there isn't an agenda that we need to feed this or that we have to force it this direction. As an independent agent, to me, the approach is you increase their options, you give them additional protections that they wouldn't have as a public consumer. And, you know, if this meets their criteria, then it's a great solution. And if it's not as good as something they see from a competing company in the same space, or if they really prefer a Medigap option, you know, they can buy those from me. They can buy those from any other local agent in town. Those products are still on the table for sure.
Anybody else? So if the council approves this, then we just need to fill this up and get it to you.
Yep, I can, I can work with you, and we can get even a Regions rep on the phone while we fill it out if that's helpful. Otherwise, you can go through it and send it back to us. We can, we can get that to Regions and make sure that it's off and running. Now, I put in the notes near the top that the earliest eligible date that they can give us at this point is 7/1. And that's because they usually require a three-month buildup just to get the, all of their work done internally as a provider to get everything set up. to get everything set up, but then also allow us a little time to get the information out to people to create an enrollment opportunity. So the earliest we could start is 7-1 if we wanted to push that back for any reason we can. All right.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, good luck, fellas.
Would you entertain a motion that we would like to make one?
I make a motion that we will enter.
Yeah, this is the guest.
This is the guest.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't hit it myself. I inhaled too much smoke from my first pile today. And I don't think there was anything green in it.
Smoke you're talking about.
Yeah.
There is no.
There is, yeah. But we gotta get to it first. I'm just jumping the gun here. Okay, moving on, consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made in seconded. Brian?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay, now new business. Four. City discuss and consider entering into an agreement with Bateman Benefits for a group retiree programming program. I should just go home. Pending legal review. And I believe that you reviewed this document.
I looked at the application, yeah.
Yep.
I don't have any issues with that.
Okay.
I feel like the last time we did this, we kind of discussed it to death, but, um, so I'm all for doing this again. I think it's great, it's all for retirees.
Agreed. Want to make a motion to?
I make, I make a motion that we enter into an agreement with Bateman Benefits for a group retire, the group retiree program presented.
Seconded.
Motion made in seconded. Ron?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get this filled out. Back to you, and if we have any problems, you can call.
Excellent. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks for bearing with us for three presentations.
Oh, you bet. My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. Number five, electric. Consider approval for the Moyet to sign IDL Waterways Easement application for the Moyet Dam. About, what, 70, 80 years later?
Right, right. Well, it turns out, you know, I'm talking with the Department of Land. In the process of relicensing the dam, what we found is that there's a lot of structures across the state like ours that don't have easement yet. And I think it was just an oversight a long time ago. But in the process of the relicensing, we let several parties know, several parties know that we were in the process of relicensing. So we asked for feedback, and this was one of the feedback items, is that we need to get an easement for anything that's in the, you know, in the water, basically. So it would be the dam, parts of the powerhouse for two and four, and also any buoys that are put across the, where we're needed easement. So the folks here at IDL were really helpful. Eric, at the, I think the lead-up here was pretty helpful in helping me kind of get this put together. I have some mapping that I need to put together to match, you know, to go along with this, but it just needs your signature. So there's really not a, I think it was a $500 cost. So that would, if you could make that part of your motion, if you choose to approve it, that would be great.
Relicensing, right?
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion we approve the mayor to sign the IDL Waterways Easement application for the Moyet Dam with a $500 application fee.
Seconded.
Motion made in seconded. Brian?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Number six. Consider Resolution 2024-002, Public Participation Guidelines for the City of Bonn, Sperry.
Finished, please. We ready to go?
Can you speak? I mean, there's no, there's no public, this is us. This is us. And I'd like to.
All right, yeah.
I read that resolution. And I just want to say that, speaking for myself, as a councilperson, any legal advice, any legal information that I want or is given to me will come from the table over there with Andrew Kay. And other than that, I don't really care about that legal advice because I'm only gonna take her advice. And I think it's well-written, and I think it's something that we need to have for our meetings. So with that, anytime that we're through discussion, I'm ready to make a motion that we do the resolution.
I think what I'm most confused about is how the public participation guidelines are stifling anybody's right to make a statement. It talks about how speakers are being encouraged to practice civility and courtesy and to limit their comments to the three minutes. But I'm not sure that, I'm not sure where the issue is. So, um, because what I'm seeing is that limiting the discussion, the discussion topics, they're not even items of discussion because the council can't respond to any of the, to any of the public comments anyway. But the issues that we've run into, really, that have been the greater challenge have been the issues that have been directed at employees themselves, not, not to council, not to any of us. Because, I mean, we're public figures. Anybody can say what they need to or want to to us. So, and, and they do, and, and that's, and that's fine with me. My, um, my issue would have to do with making sure that we have something in place for our employees or our personnel.
Well, if I could, just interrupt you for a second. I think that's the main thought of it, is to have somebody from the public come in here and get all over a city employee. And in there, it talks about if you have a complaint about an employee, the steps you should be taking, not doing it in an, in an open meeting like this. Now, for us, I mean, we're fair game, anything they want to say or whatever. But I think a personnel matter, it should be go to the supervisor and take it from there, mayor.
I don't think that anywhere in this it says that you can't speak to the council and address something to the council. Because we want the public input, absolutely, please. We want that input. But, and order and decorum in general, we've always had, as far as civility and courtesy, it's always been something that we've encouraged in.
It's all you can do is encourage.
So. I think Jerry has a question, so, but.
Will you recognize me just for a moment?
Yes.
It talks about addressing matters that are currently in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And not to this, in other words, that is stifling my ability to address the issue that could currently be considered by Planning and Zoning. And were that really, if that had tied my hands in 2001, you would have been sued because I was already talking with Fonda Jovic, who was working for Payne Hamlin at the time. And I think you guys remember her well with the second annexation. But, uh, and I was solely there for the purpose not to stir pot. But I was letting the city know they had been non-compliance with Title 67 for 26 years by not having a comp plan. And since then, we've went in a very positive direction. A comp plan was drawn up and passed. It's went through two revisions since, and now everybody, including staff, agrees, man, this is the greatest thing since canned beer. That was my whole point. And I'm using that as an example of why I brought this up.
That's where I was trying to figure out where your energy was.
Yeah, and because that says matters pending in front of Planning and Zoning.
Could you address that, Andrew Kay?
And what that's talking about is quasi-judicial matters. So when you have Planning and Zoning making recommendations to the council, there are certain types of land use where the council is not allowed to consider those outside of a public hearing setting. So for a member of the public to come and make a comment about a pending quasi-judicial matter could violate the rights of, A, the applicant, or completely ruin this procedure here in front of the council and make that act, or make that action illegal at the point that it gets to them making a decision. So that's what that's about. You can't intermingle those processes, the quasi-judicial function of the council when it comes to land use. There are very specific guidelines in Idaho statute under Lupa about what we can and can't talk about from quasi-judicial settings in a public setting like this.
So it's because it gets in the way of the rights of all the people involved in that?
Correct.
I was advised that if there is a pending legal issue, you guys cannot talk about it. The public can come in and make a comment. That's what I was advised. That.
About?
Whatever, whatever, you know.
Employee or about?
Well, we're talking about Planning and Zoning in particular. But I was advised that if there's a pending litigation or an employee being reprimanded, we can come in and talk about whatever we want. We, we're giving, we're allowed to do that. You guys are not allowed to comment on the legal cases or, you know, executive session stuff and so forth. But we can talk about whatever we want during our three minutes. That's our time to shine.
But we don't want to allow the public to come in and bash an employee for something that, whether or not they've done it, that's either here nor there. But they're not here to defend themselves. And by bringing their name up in a public forum, you're casting doubt upon them and their ability to do whatever it is that you're here to complain about. That's where all you have to do is contact their supervisor or contact me.
Right.
And we will take it from there. But we're not gonna allow it in a public forum.
And since that was my situation on the public, or the city employee, I, I did try prior. So I was going to the next level above the supervisor, which is the council and the mayor. And that's what I, I was, I was trying to be appropriate because the last thing I want is to have a bad relationship with you guys.
Okay, well, when it comes to personnel, the next step up, if you're not having any good results with the supervisor, is meet the mayor, okay? And I'm more than happy to talk to anybody about anything at any time.
Okay.
Okay?
And, and that's great, and I'll be glad to follow that. But, but what, the way I was advised, we still have a right to come in and talk. You obviously have a right to turn off the comments. And so this is a very, you know, eggshell situation. We don't want to disrespect you guys or upset you, for sure. There should be a level of respect. But my concern as a watchman is passing this resolution, which is just a resolution. Obviously, it says encourage. You, you really can't. If you push someone out of this room, if you tell the officer to remove someone out of this room for doing what I did on December 19th, you're putting yourself in a legal situation from the way I was explained. So you could do a resolution, but all you're doing right there is doing the color of, uh.
Okay, I'm not gonna get into a big discussion about this.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, yeah, let me just finish my sentence. The color of law. That, that's all this resolution is.
And, and, and let me just add one thing. When you talk about color of law, the color of law is sitting right over there on that table.
Exactly.
That's exactly right. In other words, we listen to our.
Now, we may disagree individually with something that's said, but if Andrew Kay says that's the way it is, well, that's the way it is for us. We can't argue it. It's just a done deal.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Can I make a motion that we adopt resolution? You can make a motion. I'd like a motion that we adopt Resolution 2024-002.
Seconded.
Motion made in seconded. Ron?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Number seven. Consider authorizing the mayor to sign the lease for an updated postage machine.
Um, so the place, the first-class office supply reached out and said that it was time to update the, they switch them out about every three or five years with the, you know, the products that they support. So there's no, the cost is not much different than what we already obtain per month. And I think if they will at the end, they can kind of explain that there's no penalties for the contractor just because they approached us over it, but it's.
So would you do the old machine?
They, they, we lease it, so they take it back. And then they just provide a new one, and they give us training, and it just keeps up with their.
Okay.
I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to sign the lease for the updated post, postage machine.
Motion made in seconded. Brian?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Okay, golf. Consider who expects to have new reel installed, new reels installed on the fairway mower.
Mayor, this is an issue that, well, how would it be typically handled? Is our, our city mechanic would install these reels, which are really just the cutters? I think there's five of them.
Uh, it's reels, it's bearings, it's bed knives and bars. It's actually a pretty massive project.
Yeah.
Looking at with Dan Robertson, looking at with Ralph, and they both think it's a two-day project for a couple people. To quote from TruStar, it was about 1,500 bucks. He said it might be 1,800, I just don't know until they get it. So it's just us taking off the housings, taking it down, they're dropping them off. They do it professionally, that's what they do, working tour, tour mowers that they work on. That's who they have these reels here with, less than, they exchanged them in.
Actually, this is something that probably should have been done last year.
Well, I know, actually, it's, it's good we didn't because we're gonna use the current reels to chew up what's out there right now, of course, need to be blades.
Yeah.
My toll of them. But, uh, yeah, yeah, I talked to Jimmy. He said he's pretty backed up. He's got a lot of stuff going on. He's left two other mowers that he worked on. So if we do this, it kind of frees him up to get a little mowers, sooner. He was all for it, so.
And one of the items too is that, you know, when we were kind of negotiating the contract too with Ben is that anytime there's another party doing work on the, on the mower, we would want to, you know, get approval to have another party do that. Jimmy felt like this was a good, a good company to, to do the reels, so.
How about transport?
I would just take them down.
You're gonna do it?
Yeah. I just get the new reels and bearings from Jimmy and, uh, me and, me and the helper, take the old ones off and just take them down and drop them off.
Okay. That's reasonable to me. Because they were gonna charge 500 pickup and 500 delivery.
It was gonna be a thousand for delivery.
Thousand bucks for pickup and delivery.
Me and Hopper just do it and take them down. It's saving a thousand bucks, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Wow, that's crazy.
Nice. Thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion. We approve space for the new reels installed in the fairway mower in the amount of $2,000. That would be the maximum. So.
Motion made in seconded. Ron?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Val?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
All right. Looking a lot further on the agenda, we are adjourned.